Jessica and John Hannigan. Our assistant principal, Chris Vander Kyle, and our social worker, Ms. Jordan Hable, have been working over the summer to be able to get this together and identify six-week academies that can be applied to the students to help support them, both those being bullied and the actual aggressors. We've also identified monthly activities for the students to engage in to help support our anti-bullying efforts. We've also removed COVID language, hoping we don't have to go back to that stage. We also have the use of yonder pouches. These pouches will be used for cell phones primarily for students in grades six through eight, so they're not using their cell phones throughout the day. We will have some yonder pouches available for students in K through fifth for those people who have some issues keeping their cell phones off and in their lockers. We've added language about McKinney Vento, supporting our students going through housing transition, and we've also added Chromebook fees. We want to hold the students and the families accountable for our Chromebooks and materials, especially since we plan for students to bring those home to practice more with I-Ready and for homework opportunities. Our registration, we are actually in registration week now. As of now, we have one hundred and thirty-seven online applications completed. We have one hundred and twenty-nine students in all who have completely finished registration. We still will be open tomorrow and Saturday morning for families to come in and complete their registration process. This year, we have added residency verificate, or more strenuous residency verifications. So through our CLEAR system and the direct certification for, from the state for fee waivers, we've been able to cross-reference and identify some families in which we feel that don't live in the district. So those families now have to meet with an administrator and are told at that time that they're gonna have to go through or open themselves up to yearly residency checks throughout the year, so it can happen at any time, and people who are not telling the truth about living in the district will also be assigned a seventeen thousand dollar fee. The fees right now are at a hundred and twenty-five dollars. However, all of the direct enrollments have been applied for those fee waivers, and payment options are available. And last year, we were at three hundred and ninety-two students. However, we have identified about sixty that don't live in the district, so we are looking for that number to go down. We are excited about some changes within our master schedule. So this year, we plan to offer forty-five-minute periods. That's for core classes and for specials. We also will have an extra intervention block that will be used where each grade band can switch students within a grade, so therefore, students are getting what they need. For example, if a sixth-grade student is reading at an eighth-grade level, they'll be able to go with a group of eighth graders to help stretch them. And we also have an addition of two specials classes. So, we have Project Lead the Way for our kindergarten through fifth-grade students, Spanish, like we offered last year for sixth through eighth grade, music as always, and a new addition will be theater. Music and theater will be offered every semester, so half the school will take music first and then the other half of the school will take theater. And then we will also have our gym classes at least three times a week. And then we have a few important dates for you to remember. New Teacher Institute Day is going to be August seventh and eighth, so school board, we hope that you're able to attend one of those days and meet our new staff. Teacher Institute Day will be August twelfth and thirteenth. The first day of school is August fourteenth, and then our open house, which we hope that you can join us as well, will be August twenty-eighth from six P M. until eight P M. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am? The fees include a technology fee and insurance for the Chromebooks as well. Absolutely, and it's gonna be really exciting because they roll it out every year, so next year, we'll be able to incorporate sixth grade, the year after that, seventh grade, until it's a K through eighth initiative. From my understanding from our curriculum, thank you, Mr. Cosina.
So there's two, there's Project Lead the Way launch and then this gateway for six through eight. The, I met with a couple representatives and then I met with an implementation manager from Project Lead the Way, and we sort of talked about our situation, about how many specials we have available, what our school looks like. As far as K through eight being a kind of a unique situation, I mean, there's other schools in Illinois with that situation. But his recommendation is to start the, whoever's gonna be the teacher needs to go through pretty extensive training. It's even more extensive for sixth through eight component. So he said that you're better off implementing in a sort of a calculated, precise manner to start smaller and then grow it, so is the instructor can handle more training, then we implement more modules as we go, increase involvement for each grade level, and then we're, in my, in my mind, we have a more sustainable situation and let's try to force it all in. It also allows us to still maintain sixth through eight Spanish until we can make sure that those are both aligned, so six and eight can get both.
My next question was, what does that look like in terms of when they'll take Spanish, when they'll take, how many days a week are, will they?
Yeah, so, so right now, our K through, our K group, K through five group that's gonna start with Project Lead the Way is gonna have it one day a week in the media center, so that he's gonna be working through the first module essentially with two grade bands. So K and one will be doing the first module together, so then when you move into next year, they're not repeating it. So I mean, they were, I mean, he was, he was excellent, had it all organized, you know, and wasn't, he was pretty clear on the best way to proceed. Sorry about that.
Any other questions? Oh, no, thanks. All right, thank you so much.
You can leave, but can you pass this note to Joe Amos?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Board. So, as Ms. Polk stated, we've been going through the registration process, and we've been having critical and courageous conversations with parents. We contacted the regional office of education, so for example, if I say Joe is my nephew and he lives with me, according to the Illinois State Board of Education, Joe has, you have to have legal guardianship of the individual. You can't just allow people to use your address, and we've really been kind of very strict with that. Some people don't like it, and I just explained to a parent today, she said, this is very frustrating, I, I got the paper signed. It's very easy to get a piece of paper notarized that I'm allowing you to make educational decisions on behalf of my child, but if the person does not live with you, if they, if you are not the legal guardian or court-appointed guardian, you can't just enroll a student in school. And so, people haven't liked it, but when we explained to them that we have to be stewards of the district's resources and we really have a responsibility to make sure that every person lives here, people started just being honest, okay, this is my grandbaby. My grandbaby lives in Indiana, but his father wants him to go to school with the kids, and so we've been saying, yes, he's on our list for clear, because when you run, when you run the information in the various databases and you have that person's license plate, it shows you where the person is parking their car every day. Yesterday, there was a lady and we talked to her for about fifteen minutes, and we said, we can see that your car is parked on Eighty-Ninth and Ada every single day. And she said, well, I have two cars, and I go back and forth between two houses. And then finally, she got frustrated because we were not buying that, and I said, okay, you have to, I asked our lawyer, we are allowed to do a pop-in visit, and so I said we have to do a, a, a home check to make sure that the student lives there, there has to be evidence that the person really lives there. And she said, you know what, you're not doing that, forget it, since you all don't want her to go here to school. And I said, this is absolutely a wonderful model student, however, if your zip code is Dalton, Illinois, you have to go to school there, and you can do well at any school if you put your mind to it. But I understand why they wanna go to Sandridge, so, I mean, I understand, I get it, it's a new, you know, it looks very, it's new, but we can't do that. All right, so, this evening, and I'm kind of, I'm gonna go through the finance report because Ms. White took a vacation day today, so this evening, you will be asked to take action on the consent agenda for voucher one, and that's totaling twenty-five thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents for the month of July. We are just beginning our school year, and so spending has not really started occurring any of those big bills such as tuition, transportation, and food service. Those have not started hitting the ledger as of yet, that that won't occur until usually sometime in September. For June, the board authorized the business manager to pay our year-end bills. The year-end bills totaled two hundred and eighty-seven thousand fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. I am pleased to report that the district ended fiscal year twenty-five with a balanced budget, and we are entering the new fiscal year with a slight surplus at this time of sixteen thousand dollars. The school year twenty-six budget will be presented in August. When President Brown returns, I will ask President Brown to poll the board. We need to have the August meeting at least one week before it is scheduled, and the purpose of that, when you get your budget approved and you have the budget hearing, you have to have thirty days between the, the hearing and the presented budget and the time that you vote on the budget. So we have to have our budget board approved before September the twentieth. But the way that the calendar falls with the board meeting being the third Thursday in August, and then the next meeting is the third, the next meeting is the third Thursday in September, that's only twenty-eight days. So in order to make the timeline that the Illinois State Board of Education has set for us, we have to have that meeting one week before. It doesn't have to necessarily be on a Thursday, it could be any day, so just start putting that in the back of your minds that we would either have to have the August meeting early or we would have to have, no, we couldn't have a meeting right after the, the September meeting because that pushes us past the date that is due for the state, and if you don't meet those deadlines, you will not get your funding. I'm sorry?
The special board meeting in option?
Yeah, special.
If you have a special, if you could have a special board meeting in, you could have a special board meeting in August, which would be the week before, that is also another option. For personnel recommendations, the board will also take action on hourly summer workers who have assisted with registration and kindergarten roundup. These are hourly stipends and are being included only for documentation and transparency purposes. We're not required to bring temp workers on a personnel report, but if someone ever says, who's this person, why are they working here? When we are preparing for the students to come back, the board took action, I believe that was in June, the board took action on, I think it was, the people who worked on summer projects helping us to prepare for the return of students. When school ends, teachers and kids go on break, we immediately have to begin preparing for the next school year. So if you, we have registration tonight, I believe until six o'clock, but you have to hire summer workers, because different people are working different groups. And parents have commented on not only how well organized the process has been for them, but they have also commented on, hey, I turned this document in, it was okay last year, why isn't it okay this year? When enrollment increased, well over four hundred-plus students last year, we had to hire extra teachers because we had three sections of kindergarten, and I understand if you have a big beautiful home and you think that because you're a taxpayer, you can allow people to use your address, but you really cannot do that. And so, when you, when we're having the, the person who owns the home, you have to come in, you have to sign, you have to have the attestation form completed. You also are required to sign a document saying, if we find out this person is fraudulently living there, you will pay whatever our tuition is, what it costs to educate the per pupil expenditure. That dollar amount is identified in your school report card. So they'll look at your entire budget, your salaries, capital improvement projects, textbooks, and then they divide your budget by the number of students that you have, and that's how they come up with the dollar amount. Now, it was seventeen thousand dollars two years ago, and that, that was because we did a lot of capital improvement projects, and we have the addition of the ESER funding. Now that that funding has eliminated, the dollar amount still may be significantly lower. We won't know until the school report card comes out, but many people are saying, hey, I'm not going to assume that level of lie, they're not willing to take that untruth, I don't wanna call it a lie, the untruth, to the level of getting caught or stuck with the bill. For teacher, the teachers that are recommended for approval, I talked to you about these two individuals last month. I had to make sure that they passed their background check and other checks in H R. before I put them on the personnel report. We are honored to have Mark Evans join our staff. Mark is an experienced teacher, he's had experience working at the high school and elementary level, and what I like about this position for Mark, he has done Project Lead the Way before in another school district, and he's also a certified librarian. So I think that with the expansion of the, with the expansion of our periods being forty-eight minutes, last year, they were about thirty minutes, give or take, and that's really, by the time the teacher gets the kids down and they get settled, you're left with maybe twenty-two minutes of instruction. That's not enough time for any teacher to dig deep. By the time you get little kids settled and all of that, you've lost ten or fifteen minutes, and so we wanna make sure that the specials, that we have a robust offering for students, but that they're really and authentically learning. And so Mark will start on a Master of Art, step eight. In our teacher's contract, when I first got here, the board allowed us to give people all of their years of service, and now, that was only for one year, so now I'm moving into year four of the superintendency, and so we have to honor the language as written in the contract. Mark has probably twenty-plus years of experience in education, but when you are new to a district, our contract says you get to start where you have your degree, and I can give you up to seven steps, so once you get credit for step seven, you would then start on step eight. And so that's being recommended at a starting salary of sixty-two thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Susan Van Clay has a master's degree from Northwestern University. She is a teacher, she was a teacher in the private sector. She is not a certified teacher, but we're going, we're allowed to use her for ninety days. When kids rotate semesters, we're starting her off with the starting salary of a permanent sub at thirty-five thousand. She has the experience to do the work, and we are technically authorized to do this because one part of that will be during, one, like, one semester is required, and once, one group of kids will have theater for ninety days, and then the next group of kids, so you can never be with the same group of kids consecutively for the ninety days, so I think she meets, she meets that criteria. In addition to that, moving into year four, my first year here was very challenging, and now I feel that I'm very grounded in the work that I'm doing, and we've cleaned up or we've worked to make the educational opportunities and conditions for students much better. This is the first time in the past three years, moving into year four, that every single teaching position is filled with highly qualified teachers and a diverse staff, knock on wood, you know, every year, someone always quits the year before. And I don't, when you have stability and leadership at the helm, I think that people feel a level of confidence, that you know the leader. We kind of got input from teachers, like the union, tell us what work and tell us what needs work, because people have to have a voice and some skin in the game, and people are excited about coming back. So I don't think we're gonna have a mass exodus this year. They're asking, when will my room be ready? When can I move in? That's a sign that they have every intention of coming back. We have one vacancy for a school nurse, we found a phenomenal candidate who lived in Lynnwood, I was kind of stalking her, like I went over her house, like, hey, we really want you, will you accept this job? And she had to let me know that something else suddenly came up and she's not able to do it, but she would have been the best fit for this district. So what we did was, we reposted the position, and there are some Lynnwoodians applying, so we would like to hire from within to the greatest extent possible. So, in, so in addition to these two teachers, I'm recommending my senior leadership team, which would be my district team, for a three-year contract renewals. Last school year, the board approved my contract for a five-year renewal, and I have four years left on that contract, and I would like to continue doing the work with my amazing team. I believe strong, I believe strongly that the sustainability at the helm is critical, and all three of these employees are performing at a proficient and in some cases, an excellent level. I believe that we're finally making meaningful strides as a district. That first year, we were trying to really put out fires and trying to find our way and getting to know the building and the people. So tonight, you will take action on Mr. Cosina. Mr. Cosina is currently pursuing his doctoral degree in support of his professional growth and development. He will be recommended for tuition reimbursement, not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars per year for the duration of his contract, and he is now the associate superintendent. You will also, Mr. Cosina has done everything other than superintendent here, and so knowing that those four years will go by quickly, we want to start a, a building-from-within process and grooming the leaders that you have and preparing them for the next level. He served as the principal, last year, he was the director of curriculum, he's done transportation, master scheduling, enrollment. When you're in a little district, you have to be a very humble person because you are doing a lot of different jobs that are important, but not necessarily linked to your job description. You know, all administrators do cafeteria duty, you won't find that anywhere else, but also, in small districts like this, people will get a couple of years of experience, and the history of Sandridge has been, people get their experience and they move on. So I want to let my leadership team know that I am committed to them and I am vested in them, and that I want them to be vested in the children. And then Mr. Hook will be recommended for a three-year administrative contract. Mr. Hook has in his current contract fifteen hundred dollars per calendar year, and he is completing his coursework to obtain the director's certification. And then last, but not least, I have Charlotte White. You will take action on the business manager. All provisions in her contract will stay the same, she already has an M B A, and she will not be utilizing the tuition reimbursement. These revised benefit structures will be standardized across all administrative contracts during the renewal period. And then the final item on the agenda would be superintendent's contract amendment, retirement provisions. I'm asking the board to take action on a motion to approve an amendment to the contract to clarify the retirement language, specifically sick and vacation leave payouts post-employment, and this is basically to comply with the T R S regulations. Basically, if I, in my contract, if I don't use my vacation time, I was allowed to bank up to forty days of vacation time, and whatever sick days I don't use towards buying time to retire early, I can be paid out for those. But if the board were to pay me though, that time during the same fiscal year, it would, we would incur a T R S penalty because I would have exceeded the six percent salary cap. So, included in the buyout provisions for unused sick and vacation time, the new language will read a structured payout to occur fifteen to thirty days after the last day of employment. And with the last board approving my contract, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to serve. What I would like to do to give back to this district for all that they've done for me, when I retire in twenty-twenty-nine, whoever is appointed as the superintendent, most superintendents come back and have mentors. I would offer my time at no cost to the district so that we can keep moving and growing. I will not be moving out of the state, so whatever they need, I'm in the area, and I would stop by to help that new person transition, and I'd be willing to do that once a week until they feel grounded in the work that they're doing. In a small district, you have a lot of departments, so this is my last, this is my last one. Insurance renewal. Tonight, we're gonna take action on Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois. The district will be asked to approve the medical insurance renewal with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Illinois. After negotiations, originally, they wanted twenty-two point five percent. Insurance is very important to all employees and all groups. We were able to negotiate with Blue Cross Blue Shield, or our, our broker did, and we now have a renewal increase of eight point five percent. That's significantly below the original rate. Because we are a small school district, we only have about thirty-one people that partake in our insurance benefits. We are going to offer an H M O plan, and I like the H M O plan because just about everything is paid for in that H M O plan. We're going to offer a P P O plan, and in our, in the certified contract, we have to pay ninety-one percent for teachers, whether they have an H M O or a P P O, and that's for the employee only. It's thirty-three percent the district pays if you have a family. Only two people take the family insurance because that's so costly for that part to come out of your check. If a person has employee plus children, it's sixty-six percent, and employee plus spouse, the district's portion is forty-one percent. If we accepted the terms of the original contract, it would have been over eight hundred thousand dollars. If we accepted the terms of the original contract, it would have been over eight hundred thousand dollars for thirty people. We were able to negotiate that rate down to about five hundred and eighty-two thousand, but that's the total premium. Employees will end up paying roughly nine percent of that. The teachers and administrators, there is, um, it's a PPO plus. We are one of the few school districts that are grandfathered into this PPO plus. And the PPO plus came in at a renewal rate of thirteen point five percent. So, we kinda surveyed the administrators and surveyed the teachers. Blue Cross Blue Shield wants us to let that plan go. So I've shared with people, we cannot afford that plan. However, if you are willing to pay the difference between the eight point five percent PPO and the PPO plus, then you can, you can keep the Bentley version instead of the district having to pay. Many people will agree to pay the difference. Last year, teachers had to pay ninety-five dollars per pay period for that plan. What makes that plan so phenomenal is that for a single person, you pay two hundred and fifty dollars out of pocket, your deductible is two fifty, prescriptions are coming in at like ten dollars, and then your out-of-pocket cost, I believe, was less than a thousand dollars. And so, they said that pretty much, that is, in the insurance world, let me see if I have it here, in the insurance world, that is unheard of. And another reason that I want to keep that plan is because that's a carrot for us. No, I'm sorry, is two hundred and fifty dollars for the deductible and only five hundred dollar out-of-pocket cost. And then if you have a family, seven fifty deductible with a fifteen hundred dollar out-of-cost. So, if I had a choice of, with the other PPO, for a single person, they pay a maximum out-of-pocket of, something like two thousand dollars, and then for the family coverage, it was six thousand dollars. So, that is a lot, especially if you have, um, especially if you have some kind of, um, medical crisis, and six to nine thousand dollars being paid out-of-pocket, that's, that's a lot for people, so we wanna be mindful of that. Um, for classified staff, our classified staff, which are the secretaries and the custodians, the district will pay ninety-one percent for an HMO and eighty percent for a PPO, and if they want to keep the PPO plus, they would have to pay the difference. In other school districts, we did, um, a cost analysis of benefits. And in other school districts, school districts are not offering ninety-one percent or eighty percent. They're offering a much lower rate, like seventy-five percent for an HMO and fifty percent for a PPO. And where all of that, uh, where all of that becomes important, if you're paying a classified person, let's say, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, if a person takes that PPO plus, we have to now add seventeen thousand dollars to that salary. So we want to make sure that healthcare is affordable for all people, but also watching the resources of the district. And for the first time ever, many people, uh, attended the, many people attended the, uh, district's, um, insurance committee meeting. And then last month, the board took action on the WISDIT insurance renewal. But in your board packet, last month, I asked you to take action because we didn't wanna have a gap in our coverage. The insurance went up about five percent, so we're coming in at a little bit less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's detailed for you in the board packet. That encovers our student activity insurance, our auto insurance, workman's comp, and, uh, unemployment, uh, compensation, and if anyone is ever injured in our building. So that's, we try to get them to lower their rates because Sandridge has not had, we haven't had any students injured that tried to sue the district. We've had a couple of people unemployed, and then we've had a couple of injuries, um, and workman's comp. They do their due diligence, you have to turn over the video footage along with reports because the insurance company wants to know, was it the fault of the school district or was the employee at fault? And so, we make sure that we show all of that. That concludes the superintendent's report. Um, oh, I didn't ask, were there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none?
Uh, we'll now have a report from the director of student support. Mr. Hook.
Oh, you want me to hug him? Mine'll be short and sweet.
Oh, sorry Joe, I saved the best for last. Oh, no fun, it's okay.
Alright, you can go to the next one. Alright, um, mine's short, again, don't, it's the summer, so our, this is still from what the numbers were at the May meeting. After, you know, as we know, registration is going on. Already, we know, I know that a few of the students with IDPs are moving out of the district or won't be coming back. So after, by next month, when school starts, these numbers will be different. And as we do every year, this is the grant season, me and Joe been hard at work, uh, writing our grants. So again, I applied for, this is the IDEA grant, this is for, you know, our special services. Uh, this year, we were allotted a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's now, in August or September, once they get their, um, overflow, then we'll get a new amount, and then I'll amend it to whatever added on to that. And then for our IDEA preschool, so that's for EC, uh, fifty-six sixty. Um, and all of the money I have allotted for curricular supplies, our, uh, part, uh, part of our psychologist, um, invoices, uh, PD, uh, and some assessments for our evaluations, um, help pay for our day, our IEP database, and then the, and then the rest of it goes to speed. Cause that's, as you know, our, uh, tuition, both for speed and our other alternative placements have gone up a lot. So, um, cause their, their, uh, prices, you know, their keeps going up every year, but we do, like I say, as you've seen in the last one, we'll have, if every student comes back, we'll have seventeen outplaced, uh, this school year, if all the students come back. But we don't know who's coming in, if we get students coming in, that might, you know, need an outplacement. So, once I get the, um, the overflow funds, I'll let you know what the total amount for the year is. Any questions?
At this time,
Good evening, um, so I'm gonna be brief with the consolidated district plan tonight, only because it won't be brief in August. I'm gonna be going in more detail with it and talking about how it aligns to the different grants we've applied for, and what amounts go in with the Title One, Title Two, and Title Four grants, so you'll have a better picture of that. Um, so our CDP is currently under review with the state, and I mentioned that one of the steps necessary is for the board to approve it, where we're at, with the knowledge that any adjustment that we need to make from the state is gonna be presented to you, and that'll be a bigger picture in August. Basically, what the consolidated district plan does is it, is it, it's an act of compliance for the state, but it also outlines not only, at one time, each grant had to have a plan and a program assigned to it. This takes care of basically all of your grants and what you're doing, how you're gonna impact, um, student achievement, not just for the gen ed students, but for children with disabilities, and then also your EL, um, population. So, basically, it looks at a number of things, how you're, how you're addressing family engagement, professional development, how you're using targeted strategies for children with disabilities, and then also applying that to gen ed students, and then also how you're impacting your culture and climate. So it's sort of an outline of the work that's going to come, and how the funds you're gonna use, how you're gonna make sure that those are allocated appropriately to impact student achievement. That's essentially it, and it also, just, just for one last key point, is to make sure that there's equitable, um, dispersal of the funds for your students that, that need the Title One support. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Like a motion to adjourn the, um, committee of only?
Second.
First by Ms. Newton, Newton, and second by Jeff Walker. May I get the roll call please, Jeff?
Mrs. Kruger?
Yes.
Mrs. Newton?
Yes.
Dr. McJenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray? Mrs. Snell? President Jacob Brown? Dr. McJenkins?